Don. All right, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the December 17th, 2013 Planning Board meeting. It's being recorded by Don Mackey and LCAT for LCAT and our director, Robin McDonald. Is there anybody else here recording it? And if so, what affiliation? All right, that being done, we're going to jump right into it. We have a public hearing, special permit for Bay Path College. And I think we got a couple of things to read.
Planning Board will hold a public hearing in the hearing room of the Town Hall, East Long Metal, Massachusetts on December 17th, 2013 at 6:00. In the hearing room of the Town Hall, 60 Center Square, an application for special permit filed by Bay Path College for earth removal associated with proposed academic building at the corner of Denzilow and Shaker Road. Information regarding this application is on file with the Planning Board and available for review by the public for the Board. Ty Richards. Memo to Robin McDonald, Planning and Zoning and Conservation, from Frank Moriarty, Assistant Town Engineer, regarding Bay Path Academic Building. In review of the contours on the proposed site plan, I find that all points in Section 7.31, Earth Removal, have been satisfied. The site plan, along with drainage, was previously approved. I find no indication of any part of this section has been violated. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me in this office.
All right, this is a public hearing. We're going to open up to the Board first, and we're going to go to the public, and we'll come back to the Board for a vote. So I'm going to start with us here, is anybody?
I view the site, what they're doing is regrading and, you know, making it suitable for what they have. It's, I think it's something we should allow.
Okay. Ralph?
I would mirror that. It is something that we've already gone through the site plan. We already knew the elevations. I believe we already knew ahead of time. We just informalized it.
Right. Ty?
I agree with the rest of the members regarding the grading of the site.
All right, without being redundant, I'm going to open up to the public. I would ask that you state your name and address, and then any concerns you may or may not have?
Gary Weiner with Arlo Beck Associates tonight. Just really an apology to the Board. We should have brought this and presented it at the time we brought up the request for the site plan review. It was an oversight on our part, but again, as stated, Philly is in compliance with the site plan and it was approved. Also, we've been monitoring to make sure that the roadways are clear and we're not bringing silt or sediment out onto the roadway so that the removal of the material is in accordance with the regulations.
Terrific. Anybody else? All right, you want to bring it back to the Board? Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, do I have a motion to approve special permit for the earth removal pending further discussion?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody want to add anything based on what we've heard?
The only thing I'd like to say is, I think in the future, we should just look when someone comes in with a site plan and basically consider bringing it all together all at the same time.
I think we can change that.
I think, yeah, we've talked about that. I think, um...
Absolutely.
Ty, anything you'd like to add?
No.
George?
Nope.
All right, I have a motion, and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask one quick question?
Sure. Certainly.
When can we start? Do we have a 20-day wait period on this now? Or can we start?
The special permit is already in place. I think this is more of an addendum to that than anything, so it'd be fine.
Today.
Well...
Think you could get the snow off of it first.
Are you going to be able to get all your work done before the ground freezes?
We were hoping until this. We were moving really, really well.
This might actually help.
We're supposed to get a good thaw by the end of the week, so...
57 degrees on Sunday. 51.
Because it's plenty of money.
We're in progress. They're just wonderful, so...
I'm by there all day long.
We've got all of our foundation forms poured. You know, we were just about to move into the center and do the spread footings for the piers, and it's got slowed down. So we're hoping by New Year's that we'll have all of the foundation.
Great.
Perfect.
If that's the case, then we'll hopefully have steel pretty soon.
Nice. So when does steel go up? First week of January?
No, it'll be a little later than that.
He's like, you see, he's pushing it.
Time is mine.
It really is. Yeah, it is.
You guys need a project manager? Because he's available.
Well, I'm not available, but I like project management.
Love your coffee, son.
Sure.
Perfect.
Thank you.
My apologies.
All right, we're going to move right to the business stuff. Thank you.
You too.
All right, request for waiver of site plan for American Tower, 30 Benton Drive. We're going to get this stuff out of the way before 6:15.
Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is American Tower, 116 Huntington Avenue, Boston, Mass. There's a phone number identified here. Owner of the business is Bell Atlantic Mobile of Massachusetts Corporation Limited. DBA is Verizon Wireless. The business owner's address is 99 East River Drive, East Hartford, Connecticut, 06108. Property address is 30 Benton Drive. Proposed hours of operation are blank. Number of employees are blank. Date of last parking plan is blank. Summary of business operation, Verizon Wireless is removing one of its existing antenna panels and replacing it with four upgraded antenna panels and installing three remote radio heads on existing telecommunications tower. And the application has been signed on December 10th, 2013.
So you're taking antennas off, moving them, not adding any, any structures?
Nothing underground.
No.
All right, anybody have any issues?
No.
So going by it, you wouldn't see any difference?
You'd never know.
Probably not unless you were scrutinizing it.
Exactly.
Unless you were a wireless engineer, in which case you immediately noticed the difference in the antennas.
And it probably wouldn't make any difference.
That's right.
All right, so everybody's okay with it?
No change in the height requirement.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have...
Can we take the A and R?
Certainly.
Mr. and Mrs. Sanchez are here.
Certainly.
So that is Patient's Way.
All right, A and R, Patient's Way, Sanchez, okay.
They have that. An A and R to combine lots.
Where is Patient's Way?
Off of Pibby Road, it's the Campbell Estate.
Okay, got it. I asked the same question.
There's two lots at the end of Patient's Way. They're looking to combine.
Just basically taking a line out of the middle?
Yep.
Okay. That means everything.
On the front of the code section.
They can even go back if they wanted to. They can even put the line back if they wanted to a later date. All right. Okay.
Make a motion to endorse.
Want to get a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, that passes. All right, now we'll do...
They don't understand.
Oh, you're approved.
Yes.
We're trying to move it up to get everybody home with the weather, that's all.
Union, I hear a lot of ayes.
That's good.
It's a big change.
It's fine.
Now you're good to go.
Just me here, everybody?
Thank you.
Everything in front of me? All the copies?
All the copies.
I'm going to do a request for a waiver of site plan, 264 North Main Street. Let me start reading that.
That's it?
Thank you very much.
Just nice to meet you.
Thank you for coming out tonight.
Enjoy.
Patient's Way coming in here. Yeah.
Um, it's over.
Yeah.
It's going really fast.
Am I going too fast?
Nope, not at all.
You can go faster if you want.
Sinaflori.
Request for waiver of site plan, property owner Anthony Sinaflori, 14 Redstone Drive, East Long Metal. There are phone numbers listed. Name of proposed business is Redstone Wealth Management. Owner of business is Anthie, Anthony Sinaflori. His residence, business owner's address is 14 Redstone Drive. Property address is 264 North Main Street, Suite 2A, Zone C. Proposed hours of operation Monday through Friday, 9 to 5. Number of employees, one. Date of last parking plan is blank. Specific summary of business operation, to provide financial services. No commercial vehicles, no product storage, and the application has been signed on December 9th, 2013.
Business?
Home office?
No. Business district, it's the old LePlante building?
Oh, the old LePlante building?
Right by...
Business or commercial? Business district?
That's business.
It is business. All right, allowed use parking, everything?
Loud news.
Yeah, it's an office. It's an office in an office building? In an office building.
Have a good use.
Yeah, I think so.
Anybody have anything else they want to add? If not?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That one passes. All right, next up, we've got a request for waiver of site plan, John Perenik, 11 Park Place.
Request for waiver of site plan, John Perenik, 11 Park Place, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed. Name of proposed business, John Perenik Landscaping. Owner of business is John Perenik. Business owner's address is 11 Park Place, East Long Metal. Property address is 11 Park Place, East Long Metal. Property district is blank. Allowed use is blank. Proposed hours of operation, Monday, 8 to 4, Friday, 8 to 4. Oh, Monday's and Friday, 8 to 4, okay. Number of employees, including owner, one. Summary of business operation, home office, using computer for billing. Upkeeping of green lawn cemetery machines are in the garage at the cemetery. And the application's been signed on December 9th, 2013.
He only takes care of the cemetery. He mows it and his lawnmower in the garage at the cemetery.
Okay.
That's the only thing he does. He doesn't run any other landscaping.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions, concerns?
Straightforward.
All right.
No, I'm fine.
Okay.
I'm moved to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we got a request for waiver of site plan, Jennifer Matos and Nicholas Pesci, 90 Denzilow Road, CrossFit Training.
Request for waiver of site plan, property owner is Maybury Realty Trust. Owner's address is 90 Denzilow Road, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed. Name of proposed business is Blue Diamond LLC. Owner of business is Jennifer Matos and Nicholas Pesci. Owners, business owner's address is 96 Cotton Place, Long Metal. Property address is 80 Denzilow Road. Proposed hours of operation are 5:00 in the morning to 12:00 PM and 3:00 PM. Okay, 5:00 in the morning to noon.
Right.
3:00 in the afternoon to 8:00 PM. Number of employees, four. Date of last parking plan, with copy of the same, is on file. Summary of business is CrossFit Training. And the application has been signed and dated December 11th, 2013.
It's an educational purpose. It's not a membership. It's strictly classes.
Okay.
Which isn't allowed to use in the industry.
They need to be informed that they need a sign permit because their sign is already up.
Really?
I thought that's the way things worked.
Yeah. In the back, to the back of the building. This is when you go into the back of the building where there's a couple of businesses there, signs have out.
So if they choose to have a sign, they will need to come back in front of us.
Absolutely.
All right, Ty, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Excuse me, nothing to add to what George said, no.
All right. All right, do I have a motion to approve CrossFit Training on 90 Denzilow Road?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and yeah, can we actually put a footnote for the sign?
6:15. You got 6:15.
Yeah, let's keep going because he's not here. It's a public hearing. That's all right with you guys?
Two seconds.
We'll get to the other stuff. This is going to be a request for a waiver of site plan.
Oh, no, don't worry about that.
KAS Mechanical, 52 Seneca Place.
Request for waiver of site plan, property owner is Kenneth Sandler, 52 Seneca Place, East Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed. Name of proposed business is KAS Mechanical. The owner of the business is the same. Property owner's address, same. Business address, same. Property district, Residential A. Allowed use, yes. Proposed hours of operation by appointment. Number of employees, including owner, one. Date of last parking plan with copy of the same, it says not applicable. Summary of business operation, no product being stored. Commercial pickup garage. Use computer for billing purposes for plumbing, heating, business. All parts delivered to the job site, nothing stored outside. And the application's been signed December 13th on 2013.
All right, home office, basically, computer, billing.
And the truck's in the garage?
Yep.
One truck. One truck is in the garage.
One truck.
Okay.
Screened from view.
Pickup truck in the garage.
No sign.
No sign.
All right.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Hold on, George?
Yeah.
Uh, Ralph? Okay, thank you.
You.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, let's do our 6:15. Patsy, you ready?
Yes.
All right. Do we have anything to read in the record?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'm surprised you guys are here.
Try to accommodate. Make everybody happy.
You.
We don't always exceed, but we do.
We're here because of you.
Yeah, I love it. I mean, because of you guys, too.
I like that.
Town of East Long Metal Planning Board Public Hearing. The Planning Board of Town of East Long Metal will hold a public hearing on December 17th, 2013, at 6:15 in the hearing room of the Town Hall, 60 Center Square, on application for amendment to a special permit submitted by Patsy's Pizzeria and Restaurant, Inc., for the addition of stairs off the deck at 600 North Main Street.
All right, this is a public hearing, so we're going to talk about it amongst the Board, and we'll open up the public, and we'll come back to the Board for a decision. We've got Mr. LaCory here before us a couple of times. We've talked about an egress off of the deck that attaches to the building for a safety sake. We've agreed upon a set of stairs, which Mr. LaCory has agreed to, but we just have to go through the formalities of informing everybody and make it official. With that being said, is there anybody, anything the Board would like to add before we open it up?
If this is approved, when will those stairs be installed?
I started them already. You know, I put a sun up, ready to go, but the weather stopped me from doing it.
Let me ask you this, when will the stairs be complete?
Depending on the weather.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I just thought somebody was coming in through the window.
There's plough and snow.
That plough just really was like...
It was probably soggy.
Yeah, it is.
Piling snow against the window.
All right. Did you get to answer your question?
I'm sorry.
And depending, you know, what...
Okay. I think sooner rather than later.
No, again, as long as everybody agrees that the stairs is okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All right, anybody else want to add anything before we open it up?
I'm going to hold off on any comments.
All right, I'm going to open up to the public. State your name and address, please.
Under the 521 CMR, which is the Architectural Access Board, that is now becoming a deck rather than a balcony. Because it's accessible from the inside, it's required to be accessible off of it and onto it. So the stairs do not cut it according to codes.
So I guess what you're telling me is the stairs, why it would help, is better than, is not better than nothing. I guess so. So the stairs, which would help this...
But it's not legal.
But it would be more beneficial than the situation that we have now.
It doesn't matter how beneficial it is. There's laws that we have to abide by.
Can I ask a question? My understanding is that under the Architectural Access Code, there has to be one accessible egress from the deck.
One ADA.
And since the entrance to the building and the main entrance to the building are accessible, he's already got the one. Is that correct?
That's correct, but once you put a deck on and you open it up to handicap, you put a set of stairs down there, you're not allowing somebody with a handicap to go up there, nor are you allowing them to egress out of there. You're only allowing people, so you're actually...
They can get there by going through the building.
It doesn't matter, Mr. Kingston. It's required by the Architectural Access Board. This was brought up when South Havy did exactly the same thing. And they were called on it by the Architectural Access Board, ending up with a building commissioner eventually losing his job.
All right, well, two things that, or two or three things we need to make light of. First of all, it's a pre-existing, non-conforming business, non-conforming use, and a pre-existing, non-conforming structure and/or setbacks. The deck was given a grandfather variance to decrease the minimum setback requirement. When that addition was, when that was put on, I mean, it is a tight site. There's not a lot of room to get everything that we need. We know that. I know parking is limited, space is limited, to incorporate, you know, the ADA necessities, the dumpster and/or the handicap ramp. So this Board thought it was best to do something rather than nothing. So with the Board of Appeals' decision to allow the variance, this Board thought it would be better, again, to put the stairs on rather than to have nothing. The ramp, in this Board's opinion, was going to be too far away from the door to be useful. So we thought the stairs would be better than nothing, considering there already is an ADA entrance and exit. The primary entrance is on the side of the building. That's the one that's lit. The stairs are not meant to be an entrance or an exit. They're meant to be an emergency exit. That was the intent of our decision in our discussions with Mr. LaCory. Because of the restrictions on the site and the lack of room, that was our thought, was to do something and not inhibit him and not him at the site and still protect the people that are going in and out of the building. That was our intent.
But, Mr. Chairman, you have to abide by the laws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And that's one of the laws that has to be abided by. Now, there's an option.
Which is?
Is seek a variance. I think the Planning Board should seek a variance with the Architectural Access Board or possibly contact them. But I would advise you totally to go after a variance. This gentleman shouldn't have to go for the variance. You're the one who's giving the direction. So it would be up to you to go after the variance.
I disagree. It would certainly be...
Mr. Hellier, could you type the specific paragraph? 501 CMR?
What's that?
It's 501 CMR.
No, it's 521 CMR.
521.
And if you look under the Administrative section, it will tell you that once you touch it, you got to make it accessible.
I just wanted to know if you had the specific reference for the issue of the deck.
It's under the 521 CMR.
Yeah, that's about 150 pages long.
No, it's the under the Administrative section that tells you that in order, once you touch something, you have to make it compliant.
Okay, but you're challenging the compliance of going through the building, and I...
I'm not saying that. I'm challenging...
You're saying it's not accessible. In fact, you can get to the deck by going through the building, so it is accessible.
It is. You're correct on that. But what you're doing is you're setting up a set of stairs to go up there. So what you're saying to someone that has a handicap, you, only people that do not have a handicap can enter this deck from the outside. That's called discrimination. I think you'll find that under...
I think, Mr. Hellier, you'll find that a building only has to have a certain number of accessible entrances. Not every entrance to a building has to be accessible. Not every entrance to a deck has to be accessible. This has an accessible entrance.
But you cannot put a set of stairs for somebody that can walk up a stairs and not put it for somebody else that it has to go up.
It's accessible through the building.
It doesn't matter.
Yes, it does.
You're discriminating on it from the outside.
Nobody says you have to get on the deck from the outside.
Well, here's what I'm going to do. I'm going to refer, and I'm going to send this tape as soon as Mr. Mackey can provide it to me, to the Architectural Access.
I would appreciate if you'd do that, because I think getting a clear ruling from them, rather than getting several different rulings from you over the last year...
Oh, I have one ruling. They can't do it unless they put a ramp up there. That's the ruling.
We have heard...
There's not several rulings.
That there have been various verbal instructions given to Mr. LaCory by you over the last year as to whether or not a deck was required.
What? A ruling on what?
Whether or not, whether or not a ramp was required, I'm sorry. He has, he's given you, you have told him different things on different occasions about that. And if you would like to get a ruling from the AAB, I think it'd be a great idea to get a ruling from the AAB. But my interpretation, and I have to tell you, that I am a trained access, it's not investigated, but trained access evaluator, okay? I've been through that. My wife is heavily involved with the disabled community. I have a pretty clear idea of what the AAB requires and what accessibility is all about. And I know that a single accessible entrance to a facility meets the requirement. Just as this building, not every entrance is accessible.
No, but if you do something to the entrance, it has to be made accessible.
Not every entrance.
The entrance that you're doing over has to be made accessible.
I challenge that.
You can challenge that, but, Mr. Kingston, can I advise you of one thing? The 521 CMR falls under the building code.
I understand.
For you to interpret it is incorrect, because I would like to see your certification for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts as a building official. We are trained in this. We go through this.
Would you provide us kindly then with a written opinion on this?
What's that?
With a written opinion citing the specific paragraph in 321 CMR that this relates to?
If I had my book with me or my iPad, I could pull it out right now for you, but I don't have it with me.
You can send us a written opinion, it'd be great.
I'd be more than happy.
Thank you.
And as soon as I talk to the Architectural Access Board, maybe I'll have them come in. I would have to speak to them.
Okay.
They can deal with you.
That's fine. All right, anybody else have, anybody else from the public like to? All right, I'm gonna make a motion, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Some moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Right, do I have a motion to approve the amended plan as presented, pending further discussion?
Some moved.
All right, further discussion?
My opinion goes right back to the beginning, like I said. I'm not happy with a set of stairs. I thought there should have been a ramp from the beginning if he was gonna do something. But again, I've already stated this multiple times.
All right, my opinion is we, I did a walkthrough with Mr. LaCory, I did a walkthrough with you and Mr. Helyer. The building had, in essence, three exits. One had been locked and/or turned off. This was the deck exit. The other exit, emergency exit, was through the kitchen. And when I went to go through that exit, I was, as soon as I walked through, I didn't know which way to go, because there were no signs telling me which way to go. As we all know, most restaurant fires start in the kitchen. There's a sign that tells me where to go, but once I get past that, it doesn't tell me where to go. When you get past that exit sign, it comes to a flat wall. You can go left or you can go right.
You go through kitchen.
My point being is, if the kitchen's full of smoke--
Signs go left or right.
I understand that.
But this was allowed many years ago.
Not disagree with you.
You're trying to change the--
I'm not.
--as we're going.
All right, if I can, can I finish?
I agree with you, they should have never allowed it the first time.
All right, well--
To go through the kitchen. But now, once it's done, I mean, I don't want to be in front of you guys any more than I have to. It's costing me time, money, everything else. This is ridiculous.
All right, I've also talked with the fire chief and the deputy fire chief, and they both agree with me, having an exit through the kitchen is not what they're looking for.
You know what, they just came and they just approved me of everything, without even having a sign there or a sign anywhere.
Okay, I have talked to them.
I mean, if they have something to say, they would have to say something. They're the ones that are the fire department.
I agree.
And they're the ones who are, you know, they're enforcing these laws.
And the discussions I have had with them is, the law is the law, but with the deck being what it is, they would appreciate a second set of stairs? This board has the authority to ask for that set of stairs? You've already agreed to those set of stairs?
Yeah, I'll do a set of stairs, but I don't want to come in front of the board again for this, or be told that now I have to put a ramp.
Well, right now--
But I don't have to do anything.
Right now, we're voting on this plan.
Let me ask you something. Is a deck legal? And if the deck is legal, how did that permit come about?
Correct me if I'm wrong, there's no permit for the deck.
The deck is legal by the zoning board.
I agree.
It's not a deck. It's a balcony. But then in turn, it's still accessory to the building.
And do we have a permit for it?
There's a different, yes, there is a building permit.
Okay.
A deck has stairs off of it, like you do at home. Balcony does not have.
And, you know, I should have never came in front of this board from the beginning, because I should have been grandfathered then, just like the zoning board grandfathered me in, because of the planter, which sticks out further in the deck.
Actually, at the ZBA meeting, what they actually said was they felt as though the deck that you put on was less detrimental. They didn't grandfather you in per se, because you had something behold--
Ralph, they sure did. If you look--
I was actually at the meeting and I went through the whole thing, and I was surprised that they actually approved it, because they approved it on topography. You have a flat lot. I don't see where topography came in, but that's neither here nor there. They did approve it.
They approved it by the planter, too, because the planter was already there.
Yeah, the planter, I don't, maybe consider it structural. There's no living space there. It's structural, but it doesn't support the building.
And it doesn't support the deck.
It doesn't, you can't put chairs on it, you can't put tables on it.
They're the ones who grandfathered me in, because of the planter.
All right, well, we're voting on what we have before us tonight.
Whatever it is, I just want to do one thing.
That's fine.
I do not want to come in front of you guys again, because if I have to come in front of you guys again, not only going to sue the town, I'm going to sue everyone here personally. Because my time--
And I understand that.
--and your time is worth something.
I understand that.
And I do not want to come here again.
I don't want to be threatened.
I'm sorry?
I don't want to sit here and be threatened.
I'm not threatening no one.
Well, you just did, you said you're gonna sue us personally.
Yeah, because everybody's making a persuasion.
Let's settle down.
This is the first time I'm talking--
No, you seem like a very nice guy, and that's not a problem, but just don't--
I have no issue but doing the stairs. That's all I want to do.
And that's all we're asking for.
And I don't have to do anything. But because the chairman wants the stairs, I will do the stairs.
Hold on, hold on, let's back up. Not that I want the stairs, it's that we discussed the stairs as a viable option for safety. We all agreed on it. It's not that I want it, it's that we want it. It's something that we agreed upon after mutual meetings, after many meetings, with myself, Ralph, the building inspector, and I've talked to the fire department. The general consensus was stairs were better than nothing. Stairs were better than the exit you had through the kitchen.
I agree, because I don't want people to go through the kitchen--
I understand that, nor do we.
--because the fire starts in the kitchen. I agree to that.
All right, let's--
They should have never allowed anybody to do--
I agree.
But now being said--
All right, let's keep facts, facts.
As long as the stairs are okay, and nobody's gonna fight me on it, I'll do the stairs.
Well, you're not gonna get in a fight from this board.
In fact, I can show you on a picture that I already started.
Hold on, Ralph?
Just a question on protocol, if, because we are missing a member, if we do vote on this, does it need to be four?
It does.
With that being said, should we give Mr. LaCory the option of--
You should have done that before the hearing was open.
And I apologize, I didn't even--
I disagree with that. I think we should have given the option to have the vote for the amendment, especially with the permit, with or without Sandra. So I'm gonna ask you that, because we do not have five members here, do you want to wait for that vote, because you need a super majority? And that's not reflective upon you, that's reflective upon this board due to the circumstances.
I do not want to come in front of this board again for the same issue.
Okay.
Okay? This is the fifth time I come for the same thing. I'm sick.
As we are.
I'm sure you guys are sick and tired of hearing me.
We are.
And I'm sick and tired, you know, and I'm sure you guys are sick and tired of the town watching the stuff on TV--
We are.
--being ridiculous for the same thing five times.
Yeah, we're all trying to get this in place.
So you guys need to make a decision between you guys and the building department--
That's not up to me.
--who has what.
I know it's not. All right.
You know, this is it, I don't want to come here anymore.
All right, so you're happy with the four of us voting tonight? I have to give you the option, because we do not have the full five members. So if one voter, if one member decides not to vote in for you, it will not be approved. That's why I'm asking.
And then I'm not gonna do anything. Then you guys can sue me, and I can sue you guys. You know, we're going back and forth here for the same thing over and over again.
All right, I'm gonna put it to a vote. We have a motion to approve, and it's been second, all those in favor?
Aye.
You're approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, request for waiver of site plan, Rachel Morcino, 109 Tompkins Avenue.
Request for waiver of site plan, Rachel Morcino, 109 Tompkins Avenue. Phone numbers are listed here, name of proposed business is not applicable. Owner of business is same, business owner's address is same, property address is same. Proposed hours of operation, Monday through Friday, all day. Number of employees, including owner, one. Summary business of operations, communicating with a computer, musical promotions, no products on site. And the application has been signed and dated December 11th, 2013.
I'm sorry, what was the?
She does--
All right, just a home office computer.
--uses her computer to promote musical productions, classes, things like that.
Does the sign need only get a minute?
Yes.
All right, everybody, any questions, comments, suggestions?
Sounds good.
God?
I'm good.
All right, motion to approve, Rachel Morcino, 109 Tompkins Avenue.
Some moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up, we have 6:30, request for waiver of site plan review, Painting with a Twist, 406 North Main Street. The applicant's here?
That's me.
Come on up, please.
Property owner, Heritage MZL LLC, in care of Winslow Property Management, 80 Hayden Avenue, Lexington, Massachusetts. There are phone numbers listed. Name of proposed business is Painting with a Twist. Owner of business is David Small. Owner's address is 27 Greenfield Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is 406 North Main Street. Proposed district is blank, allowed uses blank. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Number of employees, including owner, is four. Date of last parking plan is blank. Summary of business operation, we are a national franchise offering art instruction classes in a relaxed, fun, party-like environment. We are designers to appeal to all ages, offering both public and private classes. We also offer monthly classes to raise money for local charities. Please visit our website at www.paintingwithatwist.com. And the application has been signed and dated, two dates, November 26, 2013, and December 3, 2013.
That was the owner and the applicant, and this is in his Stop &amp; Shop Plaza next to--
All right, so is it his zone for it?
Business district.
Business district for painting.
Thank you.
All right, I'm gonna go right, there was a question about alcohol. I think that's gonna be the issue, so let's talk about that.
We'd like to have our patrons a little bit of wine or beer. And this basically helps people to relax. First-time painters are very nervous, and we just like to be able to have their own wine or beer. It's what the franchise has done across the U.S. And it works out with business considerably.
Okay, do we have a letter from the chief of police, or do we not? We don't?
There's several letters in there.
From?
Same letter, self-keeping. From the owner of the franchise, of the company itself.
All right, do we want to read this into record?
You can.
Now, would you like it right into record? I'm gonna ask you. You want to have it read publicly, or do you want--
I would like--
Probably should, to be safe.
I knew that would be my job.
I'm much more--
Are you sure you want that in the record?
We made Ralph do worse.
Yep. This is on letterhead, Painting with a Twist, dated November 13, 2013, to the Board of Selectmen, East Long Meadow. My name is Kathleen Dino. I am one of the two franchisors of Painting with a Twist, the leading system in the paint and sip category. We opened the doors of our first corks and canvas store in Manville, Louisiana, in November 2007. To date, we have four corks and canvas studios. They're corporately owned, and this is where we test our new ideas for Painting with a Twist franchise system. In briefly, over four years, we have grown to 110 Painting with a Twist franchisees-- franchises. Over the course of these four years, we have run close to 1 million customers through our corporate-owned stores and franchises. We have never had an insurance where, in instance, where alcohol consumption was a problem. In our training program, franchise employees, as well as owners, are instructed on what to watch for and how to react in the event of potential problematic situation. We take this aspect of the business very seriously. Our franchise has a very strong and conscious insurance policy written just for this system that covers all aspects of our business, including post liquor liability. We are not a drinking business, we are an art instruction business that allows customers to bring a beverage of choice, whether alcohol-related or not. This is an important component of the success of our system. Even just one glass of wine relaxes people and demystifies the process of painting. Many nights, especially during the week, no one brings alcohol. Coffee and Diet Coke is a drink of choice. When wine is brought in, seldom more than a glass or two is consumed. People are too busy painting, remember, this is one night, this is a one-night class. People leave after two or three hours with a completed painting. The class moves at a fast pace, and this leaves very little time for anything else. Painting with a Twist is a business that brings much to the community. It provides people a healthy, creative environment in which to meet, introduces people to art. More than 70% of our participants have never picked up a paintbrush. It raises self-esteem. Some quotes from our customers are, "Better than therapy, I cannot believe I did this. I've always wanted to try painting, never had the courage to do it. I can't wait to show my kids." We receive phone calls the next morning from people who took the class the night before saying what a sense of accomplishment they feel every time they look at the painting. We have a group of pediatric oncology nurses that come to us regularly after a 12-hour shift. They express that nothing decompresses them better after dealing with children than cancer, children with cancer than one of our classes. We give back to the community through our system-wide Painting with a Purpose program. We have donated over 675,000 to nonprofits in the areas where we have studios. And you have a successful Painting with a Twist studio without alcohol. We have two of the 110 franchises operate without alcohol component. They're consistently in the lower 10% of our franchise in terms of revenue. It is my hope that this letter will clarify who we are, what we are about, and how we can be of service to your community. Sincerely, Catherine L. Dino, franchisor, Painting with a Twist.
Okay. Do I have this whole thing for you to read? No, I'm just kidding. All right, I'm gonna open up to my fellow members, and then I'll hold my comments for last, so I'm gonna start with George.
Two things, first of all, this is either an artist's studio or a educational facility, both of which are allowed in that zone.
Okay.
I don't really see how this is much different than the cooking place down here that holds adult cooking classes and allows people to bring something in and sip while they cook.
No, that was for cooking purposes only, and they're gone.
But they were there, and--
They were there, and it was, if you listen to the Board of Selectmen, it was strictly to use in their cooking.
All right, do we, did they, did they come before us, and did we approve the alcohol?
No.
Okay.
We don't approve or disapprove of alcohol, we approve uses.
Correct, all right.
Okay, that's a Board of Selectmen--
Well, if it's a license.
Right, but we're dealing with uses here, and the use is a educational facility. You know, there's nothing to stop any business in this town right now without asking for any permission to allow its customers to bring something in, or for that matter, to serve to their customers without charge.
Isn't allowed to use?
Well, I don't see the use. I don't see a use, how that's, bringing your own bottle is a use. I think it's, you know, somebody wants, as long as they're not violating any open container law or any other alcohol-related law, it's accessory to, what they're doing is accessory to the main purpose. The main use, the main use is education. It's my feeling.
Ralph?
Here, the chair. Have you been through the Board of Selectmen? Have you asked them in regards to what their thoughts are on the BYOB?
The city attorney has made the statement that since there is no law in place, or Selectmen were not in power to make a ruling on--
As a liquor--
Yeah, but see, that's the part that I'm confused about, is I don't have any problem with the painting, and I think that's all great, but when it comes to the alcohol part of it, I don't understand, I mean, what am I trying to say? What I'm trying to say is--
One doesn't go the other.
Well, whether it does or not, you're still talking about now something that's different, well, it is different from the use, but there's a, there's a, an approval process for liquor licenses. Now, I understand this may be slightly different, because you're not selling the liquor, people are bringing the liquor, so that's where I'm starting to scratch my head and say, oh, wait a minute, where do we draw the line in this thing here? I mean, how far does our power go as a planning board when it comes to approving uses? Is everything okay, up to the point in the, where you draw a line in the sand and you cross it, whether alcohol is being bought or brought in? Or is it, or should we say, you know, go before the liquor commission and get an approval from them? And I'm not even sure if that's, you need to do that, but that's where I'm a little fuzzy on this decision. I mean, because I'd like to make a decision on this, but in my own personal mind, I'm saying, where is the line, and who crosses it to either give you an approval or a denial? For the liquor portion of it.
I understand that.
Right now, I don't see anything that tells me it's okay for customers to have BYO, unless maybe you guys can tell me something different.
If I may, based on discussions I had with Robin, who's had discussions with the chief of police, the problem, the concern they have is of control, not lack of control, but who is gonna be in control, oversight. If somebody gets drinks too much, who's gonna be responsible for their actions after they leave that building? We already have several bars in town that the police are responsible for now. The downside to us approving you is, everybody after you is gonna come in here looking for the exact same thing, which is gonna put, I personally feel the town in a situation which is gonna tax the police more and more, it's gonna give us less control, it's gonna give us less idea who's being safe and what's being operated in a correct way.
Well, we are taught by corporate how to handle the alcohol situations. We do set the pace on when people drink and when they don't. Anybody who tends to abuse that, we will try to steer them away. Who can't, we will look for a designated driver for them. We'll even offer to give them a taxi myself, and if all that fails, we will make the phone call to the police. We're not looking for problems on the road.
Now, let me ask you another question. Do you guys really want to expose yourself to this? I mean, let's say hypothetically, someone may have had a couple of drinks before they even got to your place, and then when you see him walking through the door, you just see one bottle of wine, you see them sharing it with a couple of people, so you say to yourself, eh, you know, he's probably fine, he split this bottle with a couple other people, and before you know it, goes out and has a car accident, and there's a problem, and you get sued because they're drinking at your place. I mean, is it, I mean--
There are always those worst-case scenarios.
Yeah, I understand, but a liquor--
Doesn't it, and restaurants go through the same process when somebody walks through the door?
Yeah, the restaurant bars has a whole different process. They gotta go through the Selectmen, they gotta come before us.
We are completely covered with liability for alcohol. I wouldn't want you to be dissed, but it is our policy.
Again, I'm gonna, you know, my concern would be, you know, we do it for one, we do it for all. It's a key to not--
What I'm trying to say here, though, is there are restaurants, not necessarily East Long Meadow, okay, but restaurants in the area that allow people to bring their own bottle, because they don't have a license.
Correct. In town, not in town, we don't allow that in town.
Who doesn't allow it in town?
I don't think it is allowed in town.
Has anybody ever asked us?
Yes.
It has been--
Who?
Well, I can't remember, four or five years ago, there was absolutely--
There was one, I cannot remember.
And the one of the problems that the police chief has is, are the children. 13 to 20 in their-
I didn't even think about that.
And then the people are going to put the kids in the car and drive home.
If I may answer George's question a little bit, there are so many liquor licenses and I think, you know, based on the town's population. So I think people have tried to come here with that intent, bring your own, to in fact have alcohol at their establishment and a lot of people have been discouraged by the fact that they cannot do that.
Because I know there's one restaurant in Springfield that-
I think there's one or two.
There's one in Agawam, too, but it's not with East Long Metta. Beauty salons have tried to do that, to allow people to go in and have a spot.
And I think there's 16 licenses right now, 16 or 17.
Liquor license.
Correct.
My understanding, again, was that the Board of Selectmen made a ruling that you weren't asking to have a liquor license issued and by non-action, saying they have the option, they can go through and set something up to where we can offer BYOB as a license, basically, and only have a certain number of establishments. They could go through and do this through the general bylaw and all.
Okay. But at this point, it has not been done.
Then you have, it hasn't been done, then you have your liquor licenses, which is a certain number. What they chose to do was remain silent on it. By remaining silent, it's basically allowing it to happen in town.
That's not what Jim Donovan said. He said it was going to the planning board as a use.
Actually, I was at the meeting and he never mentioned the planning board, but I did, through the state of Massachusetts, I pulled up and it simply says, "Silence on the issue is equivalent to legal authorization." And Jim basically said that he would suggest to the Board of Selectmen not to make a ruling on it, not to step up and say, yes, you can do it, no, you can't.
Under the licensure.
Under licensure, which is basically, I mean, what I'm looking at is if they came in front of us and said-
Who's they being, okay.
Painting with a Twist came in front of us and never mentioned BYOB and said, "We'd like to open up an art studio, teaching both young children, adults and all, on a one-time class basis. I don't think we would have any problems whatsoever. We would never have this discussion."
Until somebody got hurt or ruined.
Hold on.
Okay.
As an art studio, we would never have this discussion. We approve it, no problem. Then he would have the option, he could have gone in front of the Selectmen after coming and seeing us and saying, "Is this allowed?" They would have remained silent on it and said, "It's up to you," just like they did. I don't see, I mean, their business isn't selling alcohol, distributing it, serving it. Their business is an art studio. Their business is teaching painting. They choose as their business model to allow someone to bring a bottle of wine in to have a drink while they're doing it. I think we would be overstepping if we said no on this. That's my opinion.
I don't plan, personally, I don't plan on saying no to the venture in and of itself. I don't know if I'm going to approve an alcohol to go with it, though.
You're not approving alcohol.
I understand that.
You're approving them as an art studio. That would be, or art classes, that would be my opinion. And then it's up to the Board of Selectmen whether they choose to allow them to allow alcohol on their premises and I believe they've already made their decision.
That's a slip of slope.
It's up to them whether they restrict the BYOB on a business. With Du said, you actually talked about the cooking class and how they said, "No, you can only use that," you know, within the food.
That's what Chairman Federici told me.
That was their decision based on alcohol.
Right.
They've already been in front of them. Their decision based on alcohol was, "We're not going to do it."
Their decision was based on the attorney's input.
Absolutely.
I think at this point, I'd like to talk with the town attorney and also like to talk with the Board of Selectmen. However, I'd still like to get this gentleman up and running. I'd like to vote to approve the business tonight without the alcohol issue until we get the alcohol issue resolved.
Now, what do you mean without the alcohol issue? What you're saying is, we will, are you saying that we will vote tonight, but not, but not let them do everything but the alcohol and then you're going to go back and talk to the town attorney and the Selectmen and then readdress the alcohol situation?
Correct. I'd like some more clarification because it seems like there's some conflicting opinions, conflicting attitudes.
I don't believe that's within our- I don't believe that's within our power. We can only vote on whether or not this is an approved use.
Okay.
Okay? That's, you know, we don't have any power to regulate alcohol other than what's written in our bylaw. And the only thing that really relates to that in our bylaw is the requirement that if you're selling alcohol by the glass, you have to have a kitchen open while you're doing that.
All right. So what we're saying is we don't have the authority, the Selectmen don't have the authority. So basically, anybody in town can have or bring your own beer?
It's not illegal to bring a bottle of wine into a business and bring it there. It's perfectly illegal to do that. There's nothing in the state alcohol laws that could prevent you from doing that. There's nothing to prevent you from having an office party in your store for your employees. This is all, you know, I think we're really stretching our powers to try to get into that.
I'm not looking to stretch your powers, I'm just looking for some clarification from other parts of town government.
Well, if you want to waste clarification, I think we ought to hold the vote until you get your clarification because I'd hate to vote in favor of this, have it start up and then have to say, "No, you can't do it."
No, no, I don't, the use, what he's proposing, I have no problem with the use whatsoever. What is in front of us tonight, I don't have a problem with. I do have a problem with what's going to go on with that.
Without the BYOB, we won't be opening in East Long. This is where I'm going to open.
Yeah.
Okay. I think you better vote and get the opinions and then, I know that, I know that doesn't make him any, doesn't make him happy, but, you know, he may end up with a no vote if we vote tonight or if you get your opinion, you may learn that it will be a yes vote and then he gets his, he gets what he's looking for.
I find ourselves in our charade of water. I do agree with George, it's not, it's beyond our realm of official capacity. However, what's in front of us, we have the ability to vote on. You know, when you throw alcohol in the picture, it changes the dynamic substantially and that's what concerns me.
What we're voting on is if we're going to waive a site plan.
Correct.
So if we choose not to, then what, are we going to ask for a full site plan for the business? Because all we're voting on is waiving and saying, "No, you don't need a site plan."
What do you want to open, by the way? When are you trying to open by?
By March.
March?
I need three months.
You need three months to do your build-out and everything?
Yes. We have one month for build-out, one month for corporate training and hiring personnel and then just the final touches and the fourth day and open.
So if, and I'm not speaking for the chairman or anyone else, I'm just asking you a question.
Speak freely.
Yeah, I'm just asking a question. If we were to delay your vote, learn more from our town attorney and anyone else that we think we need to get an opinion from and then have the vote, how much, if any, of an inconvenience is that going to become to your business?
I don't know if I'll be able to keep this space. It's in Heritage Park.
Right, right, right.
Very popular. They've been pushing me very hard to get an answer and I know they've had other people interested in the spot, but I don't know if I'll be able to keep the spot. And right now, I see one spot in East Long. The only other spot open is the cooking class. It doesn't have my parking.
All right. Well, unfortunately, we do have to vote what is in front of us. Not what's hypothetical, what is in front of us.
Right.
So I do agree with you guys on that. So let's vote on that. I still am going to take the time to contact our counterparts because I'm, I find ourselves going down a path that we haven't been down before. I find ourselves opening up a door that I'm afraid we're not going to be able to close until it's too late, so.
You see, that's the thing that bothers me, is opening up a door that may not, may not be closed because if you talk to the town attorney or the Select Board or anyone else that you want to talk to and they say, "Hey, there's no way in the world you guys can stop this."
I need to hear that.
Yeah, I agree with you.
Yeah, because we'll-
But I also understand where George and Ralph are coming from because, I mean, I know, because it isn't-
We can only act on what's presented in front of us.
That's right.
That's what he's presenting us, that's what we can-
But I don't like the idea.
I don't like the idea or, you know, I want to investigate it further. It's not, you know, and unfortunately, we've talked about this in the past, there are things that are not written in our bylaws. That doesn't mean they don't exist. That's, you know, obviously, all of us have tried to change some of the things we have the Bylaw Review Committee. You know, it's just because it's not there doesn't mean it's, just because it's not in the book doesn't mean it's not there and this is one of those issues.
Okay. Now, the other issue is, there's no meeting in two weeks.
If we have to, we'll schedule one.
Okay.
January 14th is our meeting.
Okay. But we can schedule a-
If we have to, yes. I don't, in no way, shape, or form, I want to hold anybody up and conduct-
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I don't mind doing that at all, but I would feel much more comfortable getting an opinion from the town attorney.
I agree.
And anyone else that we need to talk to. I mean, this is the first time I've seen this and-
As myself, I think, I'm assuming all of us, I don't think anything like this is coming before us.
And the thing that bothers me, there's a lot of things that bother me about the alcohol side of it, but probably the biggest thing that bothers me is alcohol is a controlled substance that, you know, that is permitted for and this kind of, you know, skirts around the license a little bit. I'm not saying what you, what you want to do is against any law or any rule, but I want to feel comfortable with that.
I understand. I want you to look, we're going to be good neighbors.
Oh, no, I'm positive you will, but you guys seem like decent people. I'm sure the concept is great. I have no problem with anything that has to do with any of that stuff other than the alcohol part of it and I would want to make sure that, you know, whatever comfort level that I can get, to feel good that, you know, people will be bringing their alcohol and there's not going to be, you know, accidents, problems with children, being exposed to alcohol. Yeah, I know they're not going to be drinking it, but-
There are going to be children's classes.
No, no, I understand you're going to try to best you can, but I'd like to get, I agree with the chairman, I'd like to, you know, get an opinion on that.
Let you also know, we have not had, I've talked to my insurance agent, there has not been one claim filed on the alcohol.
There's always a yes. And I'm not saying this has anything to do with you because you seem like a very, very nice gentleman, this has nothing to do with you in any way, shape, or form, it's human nature.
All right. You gentlemen, Ralph, George, you want to add anything before we go?
I would like to understand more about how Massachusetts treats BYOB facilities. Because I know that they exist in the state, I know that, you know, Chef Wayne's is a BYOB place, a very popular restaurant in downtown.
Yep.
I just am not comfortable thinking that we have the power to deal in that arena or that it's, there's nothing in our bylaw to prevent that. I don't see that as a use, the use is, is painting.
All right. And that's what we're approving tonight.
And I just, I don't think we should be legislating on this board, that's what town meeting is for. If we feel that there's a need for this, then maybe we, you have town council help us come up with a bylaw, either a zoning bylaw or a regular bylaw that would regulate this if it's permissible to do that in Massachusetts.
Okay.
But right now-
Because in essence, we're in no man's land right now.
Yeah, I know. I understand that.
That's what worries me.
You know, personally, I don't have an opinion about suitability of the business one way or the other. You know, there's lots of businesses that I don't go to and businesses that I do go to.
Right.
That's personal.
Right.
But I'm really concerned about the legality of our diving into regulating BYOB as a planning board.
If we're not going to do it and the Selectmen's not going to do it, then it's not going to get done.
Well, I feel like regulating either way.
Well, yeah, I just, I'm looking for information where I am anything. So let's do our due diligence as members and find out the information we need to move forward. But for tonight, for what we have in front of us, it is an allowed use, an allowed place, or allowed parking, and you tell the criteria that we require. So if there is no further discussion, kind of have a motion to approve Painting with a Twist at 406 North Main Street.
So moved.
Without alcohol?
We're not, we're not even, that's not even in the motion because I don't think that's not what is being put forth in front of us tonight.
Wait, may I suggest that we do our homework and if we have to have a special meeting because we're not meeting in four weeks because of New Year's Eve, you know, we have another meeting for this gentleman, so we don't hold him up, but we do our research in the next, as soon as possible and then have our vote? In other words, we put this on ice until we are able to at least do a little bit of homework on our end? I mean, I mean, there's no BYBs in the whole town.
No.
And there's got to be a reason why there is.
There was. And again, like we talked about-
And who was it approved by?
It was a cooking. They went in front of the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Selectmen said, "Yes, you can have people bring alcohol in."
All right. So we already got out of conflict here.
That was-
For cooking purposes. That's in the decision.
If I may, so the board told somebody they could bring it in and then they told this gentleman that we're not going to get involved? We've already got two different decisions.
No, that's exactly what they're, it's not two different decisions. I mean-
Selectman Federici, at the last hearing, when this gentleman came before him, specifically stated that the cooking with kids, bring your own, was for cooking purposes. That's on tape. And that's what his decision was, that's what our files-
Well, then I think his decision should be, then bring BYB for art purposes, if he wants to make that decision, that's one thing, but for us to be granting approval for something that's usually a controlled substance, I start getting a little bit concerned.
If I understand correctly, what we're approving is Painting with a Twist, an art studio. It's up to our Board of Selectmen acting as the Liquor Commission to make a decision on anything to do with alcohol. That's out of our purview.
Why had they pushed it on us?
I don't believe they did. I believe he went to them first, he got a decision from them, he came in front of us, which is required to get a business certificate, you need either a waiver or a site plan, and that's what he's doing.
So what if we did this?
I mean, he can't get a business certificate without us.
What if we approved him contingent upon him going back to the Board of Selectmen and getting a definite yes or a definite no regarding the BYB portion of his business, but everything other than that, we have no problem with and we approve it.
He's already been in front of them.
Well-
They made the ruling that they didn't have the authority.
Under the license. They were talking about licensing. It has nothing to do with licensing.
Mr. Chairman never asked for a license. He never wanted to sell alcohol or anything like that.
Right, and that's what the Board of Selectmen said.
Exactly.
It wasn't under their purview, under licensing.
But they did make the decision regarding the cooking place. So why did they make a decision on that one and not this one? And I can see this happening. Next year, someone's going to come in and say, "I want a dress shop because people can shop better if they bring a bottle of wine and shop for a dress."
And I agree. And if that becomes a problem, I personally think it's up to our Licensing Commission to say, "You know what? We're only going to allow five BYBs in town or three and we're actually going to set a bylaw in place for that."
But I think the Licensing Commission should make a decision on BYBs.
Well- Well, first of all, I mean, Mr. Chairman, we don't know what the state law says, okay? We don't, we, you know, there's very specific state laws regarding licensing. I don't know if there is any state legislation regarding providing or allowing people to bring alcohol into a business when you're not charging for it.
I do know that the city of Springfield, Agawam, and Long Metta, it's on their books that they are allowed to do it.
It's on their books, specific, in their bylaw.
They have a BYOB.
Of course, they don't have.
Okay. And is that, do you know if that's a state law or a planning bylaw?
That I don't.
Okay. This actually does talk about the state law. What the state law says is if you hold a liquor license, you cannot allow BYOB. If you do not hold a liquor license, then it's up to your governing board whether they choose to allow a certain number of BYBs, to remain silent on the issue.
So in this instance, who is the governing board?
And it does say specifically, "A city or town's local licensing authority," which is the Board of Selectmen, "may choose to either ban the practice, allow it with some regulation, or remain silent on the issue. Silence on the issue is equivalent to legal authorization. Therefore, acting as a licensing authority, if they were silent on it, they are legally authorizing it."
Interesting. Where's that, what is that?
This is coming from the Law Offices of John P. Connell, PC.
Okay. I think, once again, there's another hole in our bylaws that needs to be fixed, but that's not this gentleman's problem. It's not fair to him to restrict him in any way, shape, or form if we don't have, if we don't have the rules, it's not fair in force rule that we do not have. We've been here before.
And it says specifically, the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission defers to local municipalities on the issue of whether to allow or grant BYOB or BYOB licenses in their particular town or city. So it's up to the licensing board to make that decision. And that board is the Board of Selectmen, not the planning board.
Okay. I don't want.
I, I like the idea of doing more homework, but it looks like George's not left there.
Well, I think, and in fairness to the applicant, the rules are what the rules are stipulated. We've run into this before. We don't find out what's wrong until something like this comes. But I think it's now, now that we know there's a problem, I think we need to fix it. However, that's, again, it's not.
It's not his problem.
It's not his problem. It's something that we need to look at as, as a municipality. So I certainly don't want to stop anybody from conducting business in any way, shape, or form. You know, that being said, does anybody have any, add anything else? Or are we ready to vote this to a vote?
Ready to vote.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, you did.
Can we second it?
I'll second it.
Now, let me ask you something. If we're not unanimous, does it get approved?
Yeah.
No?
It's got to be a majority.
It's a waiver.
It's a waiver, yes.
Oh, so it's got to be a majority?
Three.
Right.
Okay, so I could vote no, and you guys might all vote yes, and you'd be good to go.
Yes. Anybody want to add anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Nay?
Nay.
No, you're approved three to one. I hate to say this, but thank you for bringing this to our attention because it's not that we want to be, subject you to any more rules or regulations that we obviously do not have in place. That's not fair to you. But I think, you know, my personal concern is, 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 once it starts spreading, it will become a problem if we don't do something to address it.
Well, how do we bring this to the attention of the Board of Selectmen?
I think first we'll start with either a formal or informal meeting and maybe just a formal letter. Because I think we need to do something.
Well, shall we suggest the chairman gets on their agenda?
That's not a bad idea.
At, at a future meeting and to bring the issue up?
I think it's got to be dealt with.
I think so, too.
Because we're, we're going to be in this again.
Absolutely.
Question.
Certainly.
Does this mean that I could have my BYOB removed?
Yeah.
That I don't know. You'd have to talk to a lawyer.
I think he wants to know if it would be removed at a later date. My guess is, would be no. I don't want to say in essence you'd be grandfathered, but because anything that is going to be done from here forward will not be retroactive, typically. So once a decision is made, it's from there forward. The bylaws that we've created and or changed, typically it's from when we enact them forward. I don't think we've ever gone back retroactive.
Unless it's specified.
Unless it's specified. I don't foresee that happening. You know.
But we, we can't make any guarantees.
We definitely can't make any guarantees. I've never seen it happen. Typically, when we find a problem, we try to fix it and move on.
But again, it's, it would not be a zoning bylaw. It would be either a general bylaw or a decision by the Board of Selectmen.
Right. I just think the seat needs to be planted and some, you know, we need to address it as a municipality.
Yeah. I believe, what was it, in the 1930s, they outlawed alcohol completely? So for us to say.
Right.
You never know.
All right, so for all intents and purposes, what he presented us to tonight, tonight has been approved. All right? You know, this board is going to contact the other board and try to find some, but as far as your concern, you are approved and, and ready to go.
I appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
I hope to see you all in my brand open.
Okay. Well, thank you for the spirited debate. All right. Moving on. 782 Parker Street, revocation of waiver of site plan. This was, I think we approved a home office for computer records.
Yes, but you specified that no product.
No store, right.
To be stored.
Right.
Product has been stored, and the applicant was not forthcoming to you.
Right, there is a police, police report, fire department report. I don't think it's, I don't think we can read into.
No.
Record, so.
Yeah, I don't think we can.
No. Suffice it to say, I think there's enough evidence here for us to rethink what we've done and revoke the special permit, based on the information provided.
Not allow the office.
Not allow the office.
Unless he changes his.
And at this point, I think I'd want some, I don't know if we can ask for this, but some kind of references from the Fire Department or Police Department that this is not going on. Because I know there's an issue of legality.
They're still working on it.
I know. So until they get it resolved.
Safety issues.
Ralph, I can see you have a thought.
No, I think basically what we did is, we granted a home office.
Yep.
With certain limitations. I mean, the limitations are written directly into our zoning bylaw. And he's over exceeded those. I believe we need to revoke the waiver of site plan. If he chooses to have an office or a business or something, he needs to come back in front of us.
I agree.
And it's especially, I, I think, because this is a highly flammable material, being stored in large quantities.
It is.
It really, it, it's, it's a big issue. It's not something we've normally approved anywhere. Even if, you know, with, certainly not without a permit from the Fire Department, which will not be forthcoming.
Right.
So I, I would, I would support revoking the waiver. And if he wants to come back to us and ask for it again with better assurances that it's only going to be an office, he can do that. But I can't support just leaving it alone.
I agree. Tide?
I agree.
All right. So do I have a motion to revoke the special waiver of site plan for 782 Parker Street for Kenneth Lucas?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, waiver of site plan has been revoked.
Mr. Chairman, is there a way, I know he came in front of us for a waiver of site plan so that he could get a business certificate.
Actually, he didn't come before us, but.
Well, the paperwork came in front of us so that he could get a business certificate.
Yes.
With us now saying that he no longer has this, can we send a letter in regards to the business certificate? Because that was given to him based on our decision. I don't know if they can revoke it or not, but.
In essence, would be any successor's office.
Clerk's.
A clerk's office, thank you.
I mean, that would be, that would be my suggestion is.
That's a good one, too.
I would agree with that.
And actually, I would probably CC the Fire Department, Police Department.
Yep.
All those, so that they know that we're doing something on our end. Okay. And last up, we have the buildings on the brown property.
Did, did we vote?
Uh, yeah, we did.
Yeah, we did.
For nothing to revoke it. I know you have plenty to say, so I'm going to let you go.
Well, with the buildings on the brown property, I had asked Robin, I had told her that I think it's something that the planning board should look at. It's a piece of town property. We are a planning board. I think we should look forwards and look at the property as a whole and give the town some suggestions on what the planning board sees in the future of the property. I would hate to see buildings removed and then us spend a ton of money to put a building back up there. I have personal thoughts on it, how the buildings could be saved and used, whether it be an outdoor pavilion or something like that. And I just, I see too many times that we tear something down and then we turn around and spend a huge chunk of money to put something right back up in the same spot. I've talked to our building inspector. I've asked him to go out there with me. He has. He's taken a look at it. He said that they're not in a condemnable condition. It does need a new roof on it, but the main structure and all of the building is good. I would like the opportunity to at least address the board, maybe at the next meeting, and show you some of my thoughts on it. I've got different pictures, diagrams and all. See what your thoughts are. And then, as a whole, go in front of the Board of Selectmen and say, you know, this is an option to use the property as.
You know, I've, I've never gone through the buildings. I don't know anything about them, but I'd like to get myself up to speed. How could, when and how could I do that?
64 Hamden Road.
Just go out there and do it, right?
And if you'd like to, if you let me know when, I will actually have a area plowed for you.
Let's go together.
That would be great.
George, anything you'd like to add?
Uh, no, I, you know, personally, I, I think the buildings are not appropriate for the kind of uses that would go there. And I think they're right where playing fields would be very appropriate because it's a black part of the property. So personally, I, I'm, I can't, also, the buildings are going to need a lot of work. We cannot use community preservation money on the buildings. It would have to come out of the general fund. I, I, I really don't, don't see that they're a benefit to the town, but that's my personal opinion. I'm willing to be persuaded otherwise.
Yeah, I have, I have an open mind about it. I think we do need, we definitely need more playing fields for the kids. We don't have enough of that right now. I walked the buildings through. They do need a substantial amount of work. The amount of work versus building a new building, you know, that can be argued back and forth. Well, let's, let's face it, we have a general lack of funds and we have no shortage of projects on the horizon for the town. So I think we need to look at what's going to be best for the town and most financially practical. That being said, I don't know what the answer is to that question. You know, I think, you know, fields are a necessity, whereas I don't know where a pavilion would be. Not saying it wouldn't be nice to have it. I would also, you know, I'd like to get the public's input, too, because I wouldn't want to spend money on something that's only going to benefit a few. I'd rather get, you know, everybody's opinion and try to benefit the masses versus, you know, not personal interest per se, but individual pass, if you will. And that's, I don't know, kind of how I feel. I could probably be persuaded one way or the other. But I think I'd like to get every, other people's opinions other than.
I, I would just hate to see us tear something down and then turn around and go, five years from now, oops, that was a mistake. Oh, well, let's, let's build another pavilion and.
Well, let's just, let's just go in and do an assessment. I mean, you know, if, if it's going to cost more to save them than it is to replace them, then we're going to do that. If it's, you know.
And again, it may be.
And, and I just can't comment to George because I just haven't been through them. I'm not familiar with them. But, you know, if, if it's a huge expense to save something that isn't really worth saving, it, it's not good money spent. Buying, buying hay for a dead horse.
One of my concerns is, I think they're an attractive nuisance. They're, they're not secure.
That's a good point.
Kids can get in there.
Are they secure or are they not?
They're not.
I know you can get in.
Funds were set aside to secure them. The Board of Selectmen actually stated that the buildings needed to be secured and the funds were there to secure them, and nothing has been secured.
So who has, where are the monies for that? DPW, private contract?
The original monies for the original site plan was for securing the buildings and initial site work that needed to be done.
So the money's been allocated and set aside?
Yeah.
Into, in what fund?
It's community preservation.
And nothing's been done? So I guess who?
The securing of the buildings wasn't done, obviously.
The securing of the buildings, Ken, yeah. That was community preservation money that was provided, and nothing's been, been really spent on it, other than widening the road and getting water onto the site.
DPW did.
Yes, DPW widened it, but not to our site plan.
Yeah.
We were supposed to have asphalt installed.
Should we be asking them, the DPW or the Selectmen, who's going to take care of this?
That wasn't done.
Asphalt was never, never installed. My thought is for the board to actually take a look at it and just give our thoughts on it. I mean, a planning board with town land, you know, see what our thoughts are going forwards, whether field trip up there, whatever, to take a quick look at it. And again, that was, I asked for this, and like I said, I personally, I have some envisions of it that I know other members don't. And like I said, I'd just like the opportunity to lay it out in front of you. I'm, I'm almost done with it. I just couldn't get it all done with the snow.
That's all it's the cost.
Well, there's, I mean, we're looking at a new town hall. We're looking at a new school, a new ladder truck.
It's over a million dollars for painting.
You know, we're, you know, we have millions of dollars of projects ahead of us. And unfortunately, I, I, I'm afraid this is going to get pushed to last.
And it's in the middle of a residential district. And you know yourself, if you've ever been a sports dad or sports grand.
I'm not a granddad.
I mean.
I'm a granddad.
And I'm going to throw this out there.
I'm trying to be younger than I am.
The traffic and, and everything else, it's, it's a lot. It's a piece of land that's in between two residential, I mean, it's, it's on Hamden Road. And.
Now, there, there are a lot of competing visions for that piece of property.
Right, right. And the Police Department is very concerned with the site. As the site, you know, for the, and their recommendations even before the gardens were put in was to lower that area so that the site was safer. So I mean, it's, it's a huge, it's a huge issue. I mean.
I'm going to, for what we're looking at?
The recreation has said that it's over a million dollars per hill.
It sounds like we better do a land study.
Well, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission actually did.
Was it?
It was done.
And you see, I'm not familiar with anything that's been done on this property before.
There were several different proposals put forward initially. Subsequent to that, other people have come forward with other proposals. There are, there are a number of different visions for that property. There's one group that wants to keep it for passive recreation and community gardens. There's another group that wants to put horses there. There's another group that wants to put playing fields there. There was discussion at one time of putting elderly housing there. Okay? No one has truly tried to come up with an overall vision that, that they would sell to the town. And specifically, the Board of Selectmen has not taken lead on it. Okay, which they should, because they're wanting to control the property, quite frankly. Somebody's got to come up with a vision and sell it to the town. But so far, nothing, that there's no gelling of what it really should be.
No, and the last vision was to sell it. So it's.
So you have a vision that you're putting together?
I do. And I, I have, like I said, I was hoping to have it done by this meeting so I could lay it out for you and get input. Like I said, one person cannot be.
No.
Fully in charge of that. It's, it basically has to be the town embracing the thought of it. I mean, I was quite involved with the community gardens. I did some of the planting up there. I noticed one side, we didn't even plant this year because it was so wet. Water was just flowing out of the ground. But it was an excessively rainy season also. I tried to plow it. I did, but it was mushed the whole time.
I think short term, we need to get the building secured. Because I don't think we're going to have any answers any, anytime soon because of that, for lack of funds, but.
I would love to see the Board of Selectmen basically put someone and say, let's secure them because, and I think they already did. I just don't think it's been done.
I don't know if they put anybody in charge.
Right.
I thought Deb was in, in what the lead person on that.
Right.
Right. All right, so we're going to leave that open for further discussion.
One last thing.
Nope.
Can we?
Oh, minute.
Approve some minutes. I have August 27th.
Would that far be?
You could sign them. Yes, that's a pencil.
Oh, thank you.
We already approved those.
Yeah. We approved them or not signed them, or both?
No, you didn't approve them.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor approving the August 27th minutes?
Aye.
September 10th.
September 10th.